It is Tuesday, the 23rd of June. I want to welcome everybody to this committee meeting. My name is Herb Wesson and I'll be chairing today's meeting, joined today by Marquise Harris Dawson from afar. I see him, but I can't touch him. Welcome, Mr. Harris Dawson.
Hey, hey.
Clerk, why don't we read the items?
So, councilmember, would you like me to read the role?
Oh, I guess we have to do that first. So, yeah, let's go with the role call.
So, councilmember Nury Martinez, she is absent. Councilmember Marquise Harris Dawson.
President.
And councilmember Herb Wesson.
Here.
Two members present and a quorum, sir.
Okay, let's go through the, let's read the items and see if we can dispense with some consent items.
I believe we have items 1, 2, 3, 4, and 11 are going to have amendments. Would you like me to read those into the record right now?
Would you please?
Thank you. So for item number one, we have, we would like to amend the language to not delete the last sentence in 104.0147. For item number two, we further move to amend the Los Angeles Municipal Code Section 104.106.1C and process the next 100 applications from the list published by D.C. Department of Cannabis Regulation titled Phase III Retail Round One Submissions. And that's on 09/03/19, 10:00 a.m. to 09/17, 2019, 10:00 a.m., dated September 26, 2019. There's a URL and it's at HTTPS cannabis.alecity.org and the rest of that URL will be on the report. Subject to a re-review of any applications that were deemed ineligible for further processing due to a community plan area having reached undue concentration on or after September 3, 2019, or due to sensitive use created by a Phase III Retail Round One Type 10 retailer application. Applicants eligible for further processing under Section 104.06.1C as of January 1, 2020 shall not be included in the calculation of undue concentration as defined in Section 104.01A28. On this one, they further move to authorize the city attorney's office to make any technical changes necessary to effectuate the intention of these recommendations in consultation with the department and the rules and, sorry, the rules Elections and Intergovernmental Relations Committee Chair and request the city attorney's office to transmit the draft ordinance to the city clerk's office no later than Friday, June 26, 2020 at noon. So that was the end of item number two. Amendment, item number three. The amendment is, I therefore move to amend the Los Angeles Municipal Code Section 104.20 to require that an individual who seeks to participate in Type 10 Retail Round Two application processing to have a prior California arrest, to have a prior California arrest or conviction and either meet one of the following two criteria. Number one is low income, or number two is disproportionately impacted area. And further move to amend Los Angeles Municipal Code Section 104.06.1 to require participants in Type 10 Retailer Round Two to meet the criteria for disproportionately impacted area as established per the expanded analysis and the proposed definition for low income in the recommended Los Angeles Municipal Code amendments to determine eligibility as a social equity individual applicant. The amendment for item number four is to move to amend Section 104.03A to require that applications engage with and seek written input from the following key stakeholders for the area in which the proposed business premises will be located, including but not limited to area neighborhood council, Los Angeles Police Department Division, local chamber of commerce, and at least one substance abuse intervention, prevention, and treatment organization within the community plan area. The Los Angeles Police Department shall provide the city council crime data for the area and a letter stating their position on the application request. And then the last amendment is for item number 11, which is to add language to state that upon payment of the required fee, the Department of Cannabis Regulation will have 30 days to transmit a PCN to the city clerk's office.
Thank you very much. I know that was a lot. I appreciate it. So, let's go to comment now.
Yep.
Public comment.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read out the rules for public comment?
Yes.
Thank you. So for members of the public calling in, when it is your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute providing to speak up to two minutes total. Because this is a special meeting, we're not taking general public comment. We'll let you know when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can, and if you are not speaking on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you're speaking on topic, you'll get one brief warning from me or the chairman. If you do not get clearly on topic immediately or again stray off, the chairman will cut you off and will forfeit the rest of your speaking time and will move to the next speaker. Finally, for members of the public calling in to speak, as soon as you hear someone address you, you are live in the committee meeting. If you're also listening to the committee meeting on your computer, channel 35, or other devices, please turn down the volume on those devices immediately. There's a time delay between the broadcast on the devices and the live meeting, and it will cause a lot of confusion if you continue listening on your devices. So the clerk will now read out the call information for the public.
Thank you. Members of the public who would like to offer public comment on the items listed on the agenda should call 1-669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1606553266 and then press the pound button. Press the pound again when prompted for the participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, please press *9 to request to speak.
Thank you. Okay, let's begin.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Bobby Vecchio from the SEC, speaking on Agenda Item 1.
Okay, you have one minute, speaker.
Thank you. I was shocked to see the latest release from the DCR. Myself and others have been waiting for years to get licensed for cannabis delivery. Time after time, we've been told our term is coming soon. While waiting in order to remain legal, many quality operators were forced into predatory relationships with existing license holders. Now, after two years of making expensive, life-altering preparations to apply for a license, the DCR is suggesting that nobody but social equity applicants should be able to apply for new delivery licenses for the next five years. Why? Our city needs to help businesses of all sorts locate here so we can benefit from jobs and tax revenue, especially with COVID, folks relying more upon delivery than ever. Instead of standing by and watching companies deliver into L.A. from outside of our city limits, which results in us losing tax revenue, we need to issue licenses to good local operators. The city has delayed and mismanaged this licensing process in every conceivable way. Countless big-name cannabis companies have already left L.A. and their taxes and jobs left with them. Don't let this continue happening. Cannabis is not going away. We need to embrace its fate and harness its power for the benefit of our future. Please disregard the DCR's recommendations. Thanks.
Let's go to the next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name.
My name is Zachary Pitts. I'd like to speak on items 1 through 5.
You have two minutes, speaker. Please begin.
Delaying licensing for regular delivery entities until 2025 is a terrible idea born of a licensing program that is failing to accomplish either social equity or significant tax revenue for the city. I hope the hope of a competitive advantage inferred by advancing their licensing first ignores the realities of the market with licensing options in nearby cities and the numerous delays for years and years of substantial numbers in your licensing system here in L.A. To be clear, at the very beginning, the L.A. Delivery Alliance and the Southern California Coalition urged a streamlined and nimbo licensing process. We told the city you needed to create a flexible and ambitious DCR without the timid and restrictive nature of your past attempts to regulate medical cannabis, to leave the actual operations to the VCC and state entities and focus on zoning, to keep social equity simple and straightforward. We were ignored, but I still encourage delivery operators to be patient with L.A. It may take longer than we expected, but I still supported the city council's action. I went to the committee meeting pitching your ideas. I put the work in to get social equity candidates excited about this program, and I even personally trained people on that law. Never would I expect such dramatically stupid updates to the problems we told you would happen. You must not continue to devastate the attempts of delivery to get licensed and operate compliantly. The suggestions you are considering amount to losing revenue and expanding the black market. The DCR has an opportunity to prove it can walk and chew them at the same time. It can license social equity candidates and expand delivery licenses for everyone. I support the goals of righting the wrongs of the drug war, but that entails defunding the police and heavy reforms to criminal justice system, not aspirating to attempts of cannabis delivery operators in boot base to pay their taxes and operate under a license in L.A.
Next speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Evelyn Scott, and I live in, my business is in District 10, and I'm supporting social equity applicants. I'm in support of the lawsuit that has been filed by the Social Equity Owners and Workers Association against the DCR in the city of L.A. The application process was unfair and it disadvantaged hundreds of applicants. This is urgent, you guys. You know, we don't support this agenda item. The motion brought by Councilman Harris Dawson to allow the issuance of temporary approval for just 100 invoiced applicants? That's absurd. We support the DCR's recommendation to grant all temporary approvals to all applicants. We have endured enough, and we're already going through so much with COVID. A lot of us have had our businesses. We've lost our properties, and it's unbelievable, Council President Wesson, that you don't say anything and you know that we have been fighting for this for so long. All 802 applicants should have the opportunity to move forward, and this climate, when you see everything that has been going on, you see the disadvantages.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's go to the next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
I am Sarah Armstrong, Director of Industry Affairs for Americans for Safe Access and Policy Chair for the Southern California Coalition. I'm asking today that you maintain the opportunity for delivery licenses. This is an urgent matter of health and safety for Los Angeles residents. We must have licensed facilities that are obeying the law and testing their products, selling clean, safe things to a public that's already reeling from a pandemic and does not need any of the health problems that come when illegal delivery services utilize contaminated products because they cannot test them per state law. Delivery services are so important to patients and so helpful to consumers. If you maintain the current program already in the code and ready to go, this pilot program would give us a good idea as to how many delivery services we need and how effective they are. You've already passed this piece of legislation to have ended would be difficult.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Daniel Souza. I'd like to speak on items 1 through 5.
You have two minutes. Thanks.
Thank you. The stated goal of the social equity program is to promote equitable ownership opportunities and to decrease the disparities in life outcomes for marginalized communities. Ironically, up to this point, the exact opposite has occurred. As the first-come, first-served design of the application process itself did not promote equitable ownership opportunities. Hundreds of applicants spent a lot of money and are way worse off than they were before. This is a direct result of failed policy and failed leadership. The city's policy has succeeded in dividing the pool of 800 applicants into 100 winners and 700 losers. There was and still is a simple answer to fix the social equity program. Process all of the applications received in Phase III Round One. Hundreds of applicants have made this request. We have asked DCR to make this recommendation. We have asked the commission to make this recommendation. We have asked the Rules Committee. We have asked council, but no one has the courage or the political will. So 700 applicants remain on the outside looking in. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Jason Boulding, and I would like to speak on items 1 through 5.
Two minutes, please. Thank you.
You know, just to give my experience and to go on with the last caller, you know, the whole point of the social equity program was to provide access to social equity applicants. And my Phase II approach has been, I've been used by an attorney. He's used my name on licenses that I didn't know he was using my name on. And all of those licenses as a Tier 3, I'm a Tier 2, can as a Tier 3, all of those licenses have been able to proceed. I've been abandoned from my location. They told me they no longer have a location for me. The DCR has not tightened up restrictions to help with social equity applicants as far as setting up deals with their Tier 3 applicants. You know, so as of now, I'm abandoned with no location, and people with the money are able to proceed with their licensing, you know, under fraudulent claims, using my name and things of that nature. And it's just nothing has been checked, nothing has been tightened up. I've gone to the city. I've spoken with CAD. I've spoken with numerous people, and it seems like there's nothing there to help the actual social equity applicant. You know, it's hard to get started when you're considered low income, but then they don't tie your investor to you anymore. You know, things need to be tightened up, and there needs to be a channel that social equity applicants can go to help us with all of these bad deals that we've been put in and these, you know, I don't know if this is the correct word, but scrupulous attorneys, you know, that have found loopholes in the system and are able to go through and do certain things and kind of leave you out in the cold as they progress with their licensing.
Next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hello?
Yes, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Oh, hi. My name is Ramyar David Koshpin, and I'm trying to do items 1 to 5.
You have two minutes. Please go ahead.
Okay. Dear Honorable Councilmember of the City of Los Angeles, my name is David Ramyar Koshpin. I am the Phase II Social Equity Program applicant and my business is in District 9. Given the current relocation restriction, I have the predatory practices on my hands and I have not pursued that.
Speaker, you're breaking up. Can you please try to speak more clearly and get in a better location? Your signal's breaking.
Yeah, yeah, just give me a second. Sorry. Is it getting better now?
A little.
Okay, okay. So, given the current relocation restriction, I have experienced the predatory practices from my landlord and have not been able to schedule my inspection and relocate to another location and complete my buildup. I have been communicating with DCR for the last year to ask for help and implement the social equity emergency rule which would allow social equity program participants to request a change of address based on unforeseen circumstances, including predatory practices from investor, landlord, and other partners. I hope these processes would take a month or two, but now it's over the year. First applicant is still in the limbo because changing the ordinance to allow cannabis businesses to move require action by the council and the Rule Election and the Intergovernmental Relations Committee. I am here to strongly support and encourage the city council to adopt the DCR policy recommendation to allow the relocation of the business premises and ask the city council also grant the Phase II social equity applicant more time to conduct their initial inspection because the due date is July 3 for Phase II social equity applicant, maybe re-
Next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, hi. Good morning. My name is George Blaine. I'd like to speak about item 1 through 5.
You have one minute. Please go ahead.
Okay. Again, my name is George Blaine. I live in District 7. I'm a social equity applicant. I am in support of the lawsuit filed by the Social Equity Owners and Workers Association against the DCR in the city of Los Angeles. The application process was unfair and disadvantaged hundreds of applications in the TRO ex parte hearing between SEOWA and the city of Los Angeles. Honorable Judge Mary H. Strobel found the matter to be so urgent that she scheduled an expedited preliminary injunction hearing to make a ruling on this matter on July 9, 2020. We do not support our petition. We do not support Agenda Item Number 2, 20446S1, the motion brought by Councilman Harris Dawson to allow the issuance temporary approval for 100 invoiced applicants. We support the DCR's recommendation to grant temporary approval to all applicants. We urge you to be on the right side of justice. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Lynn Lyman, items 1 through 5.
You have two minutes.
Good morning. My name is Lynn Lyman. I am a resident of the 6th District, and I was the co-author and co-chair of Proposition 64. I join today to speak in full support of Item 1, specifically DCR Reports 1 and 2, and all the related proposed amendments. This is the kind of comprehensive reorganization and revision of the cannabis procedures ordinance that we've needed for a long time. And if you pass these revisions, it saves me from having to draft and raise money for a ballot measure. Although none of what we are discussing today gets at the critical issue of creating a community reinvestment fund with a portion of the tax revenue, nor does it address the problem of tax rates that need to come down. But many of these amendments reflect much of the stakeholder input we have been providing for years, and I herald the holistic approach. Limiting retail delivery license to social equity applicants through the end of 2024, which is only three and a half years, not five, is a bold and much-needed move. We all know social equity has been a failure here in L.A. and across most jurisdictions. Too many loopholes, too little time, too much greed. But this revisioning of LA's cannabis social equity licensing program is the kind of substantive commitment to establishing a working and meaningful framework. This is the first real hope for social equity to succeed. And to those who claim it isn't fair for them or their clients, I say, the war on drugs was not fair. People of color, and especially Black people, have been targeted, prosecuted, imprisoned, and killed for cannabis prohibition violations at much higher rates than other people for decades. This is what affirmative action looks like, and it makes sense for L.A. to be the city leading the way, especially in this moment where everyone is finally openly acknowledging that Black lives matter and that more must be done to invest in communities of color. And this move is consistent with the bold vision we have seen from each of the three members of this committee in recent weeks around the issues of having non-police personnel respond to non-violent calls for service.
Thank you. Next speaker. Thank you.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name is John Galobli. I'd like to speak on items 2 through 5.
You have two minutes. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I have to know, for the proposed Type 9 delivery application process, would a Phase III Round One applicant that came in in the 280s be eligible to this priority? In other words, will the 700-plus applicants that didn't get a Type 10 in Round One, are they going to be eligible for priority Type 9 licenses? If that's the case, does the fact that the location did not qualify because of sensitive use is applicable to Type 10, a storefront license, prevent it from seeking a priority Type 9? And when will Type 9 applications be accepted?
Next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Karina Christmas, Item 2.
You have one minute.
Hello, my name is Karina Christmas. I live in Venice. I'm a social equity applicant. I'm in support of the lawsuits filed by the Social Equity Owners and Workers Association against the DCR and the city of L.A. The application process was unfair and disadvantaged hundreds of applicants. In the TRO ex parte hearing between SEOWA and the city of L.A., Honorable Judge Mary Strobel found the matter to be so urgent that she scheduled an expedited preliminary injunction hearing to make a ruling on this matter on July 9. We do not support Agenda Item Number 2, 200446S1, the motion brought by Councilman Harris Dawson to allow the issuance temporary approval for 100 invoiced applicants. We support the DCR's recommendation to grant temporary approval to all applicants. We urge you to be on the right side of justice. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Lenise Martin.
What item would you like to speak on? Yes.
Okay, Item 1 through 5.
You have a minute. Please go ahead.
Oh, yes. Hi, yes. My name is Lenise Martin. I am the Vice Chair of Oakland Cannabis Regulatory Commission. I'm also the co-founder of the Hood Incubator, and I'm here to speak in support of Agenda Item 1 and the comprehensive change that y'all have been making to your program. For the course of two to three years, you know, Oakland, we got our program going up in about 2018. In the course of the years, I've been interacting with a lot of the district organization and individual operators on the ground. I've heard all of the complaints, I'm sure you have, as a commissioner, about what's going on in L.A., you know, word spreads. And I really commend you, the bodies who are taking that, looking at this issue competensively, to a complete overhaul. I know often, government bureaucracy, it just seems like we have to take a piecemeal approach to things. We know that that piecemeal approach wouldn't have genuinely lifted up equity. So I applaud you for the effort that you're taking.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you very much.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Cherie Franklin, Items 1 through 5.
You have two minutes. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Cherie Franklin with Go Verde Incubator and Economic Development Corporation and a member of the Cannabis Oversight Committee. My comments are briefly submitted, a detailed letter with our recommendations, which primarily stem around the fact that- the fact that, you know, these licenses have to be vetted. Without proper vetting, we're essentially not, we don't have a social equity program. What we're setting up is economic apartheid, where you are forcing people to have to be potent to investors and landlords who control all the decision-making and control their equity and control who's hired and everything for that business, and they have no rights within their business. You have to vet these applications as you indicated you would. Secondly, we're setting up a system of lawlessness if we are not going to vet and approve all of the applications that are viable. Right now, we are rampant in South L.A. with illegal operators, and it makes absolutely no sense for the city to say, oh, we're moving forward with 100, when in fact you have wronged 800-plus applicants. And you need to correct that because we're not going to have a good system here with credible businesses and viable businesses until we do that. The other issue with investors controlling applicants' decisions, they're not supporting Phase Two. They're not supporting minority businesses who can provide supplies. They're going to come in from outside of this community, outside of this city. So how are you creating a system where people can actually be viable? There will be no one for social equity applicants in Phase Two to sell their products to. But you have to vet everybody. You know that those licenses are in the hands of people who do not care about this community, the applicant, and they're doing things to take control over the licenses. And we need you to stand up, and we need you to do something about it. And right now, the Cannabis Oversight Committee is going to reach out and vet every applicant and make sure that they are getting the type of agreement that they should have.
Thank you.
We're going to take that responsibility.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Rosa Lawrence, Items One Through Five.
Two minutes. Please begin. Thank you.
Yes, I urge the city to process and approve as many of the pending applications as possible so the applicants who expended substantial resources in reliance on the city's licensing program can start operating their proposed businesses. Any other approach will likely turn into expensive and lengthy litigation at a time when L.A. is desperately in need of new businesses to provide tax revenues and employment to the city. Right now, there's over 5,000 liquor retail licenses in the City of L.A. There's no reason why we can't issue enough cannabis retail licenses to process all the pending applications. Everyone who submitted applications had to secure real estate in the proper zone for months and spent a lot of money, but none has received any license. The city stopped the whole licensing process and stopped processing applications after Mayor Garcetti called for an outside audit, after claims some applicants received special treatment. Now people have been bleeding money for months on end, waiting for the city to move forward with licensing. People relied on this city and its promise to help social equity candidates. Most of them have now suffered serious financial harm as a result of their applications. We looked at the results of the audit. It showed that people who logged in early against the rules were six times more likely than people who followed the DCR's instructions to get an invoice. This is totally unfair, and many people who followed the rules have suffered. L.A. has a serious shortage of licensed cannabis retail outlets. It's caused the unlicensed illicit market to thrive. The unlicensed shops pay no taxes, comply with no regulations, and sell untested products that are creating a public health risk. As things stand now, most applicants have lost large sums of money in reliance on the licensing system, causing damage to the very group of social equity applicants the city was trying to help. The social equity program was supposed to be a form of reparations for victims of the war on drugs. Instead, it's turned into a system that's done more harm than good. Many have threatened litigation against the city, but we're trying to help encourage a solution where the city awards as many licenses as possible.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Johnny Sage, Items One Through Five.
You have two minutes. Please begin.
Hi, as mentioned, my name is Johnny Sage of the Cannabis Equity Retailers Association. We are deeply appreciative of the Rules Committee considering a motion to enable successful Round One applicants to obtain temporary approval within an efficient timeframe. SAR is optimistic that any amendments to the definition of the equity share will be addressed with priority in this process. We believe it will help ensure that no further delays in the process, that all further delays in the process are minimized. We are looking forward to supporting our fellow social equity individuals who are expecting Round Two to be their opportunity to give back to their respective communities. As you seek to reach a successful resolution for the Round One application process, we at SAR are ready to support the city and the council in any capacity necessary. We hail from the communities in Los Angeles most impacted by the war on drugs and understand the positive impact that a successful cannabis industry can have for the people of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Good morning. My name is Taylor Basely, and I'd like to speak on Items Number One Through Five.
You have two minutes. Please begin.
Thank you. There is no question that this program was poorly designed from the get-go. First come, first served was the setup. But these motions and amendments go a long way to learning from failures and crafting a better future. So I'm here to encourage their adoption and expeditious scheduling at city council generally. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Donnie Anderson.
Please, please state your name and the item you'd like to...
Donnie Anderson. I would like to speak on Items One Through Five.
You have two minutes. Please begin, Speaker.
Yes, I like how everyone speaks about the fail war on drugs. But if you look at the top 100, it doesn't look like the communities that's been negatively impacted. We need to make sure that we vet everyone thoroughly and make sure that those who've been negatively impacted are the ones that's getting a license. We don't need to just move a program along without making sure we vet the people who are supposed to represent. This is what's going on all around the country and around the world right now. I'm tired of people putting their foot on our neck and then exploiting our community. It's time for this shit to stop, and we will make sure it stops. So we need to do this right. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, hi. My name is Tigran Kachatrian, and I'd like to speak on Items One Through Five.
You have two minutes. Please begin.
First of all, I want to say thank you guys for considering giving us temporary approval. It's been a long time coming. It's getting really hard. It's been hard from the get-go. I also support relocation of businesses, and I also want to share my personal experience with Phase Three on September 3rd. I applied myself. I couldn't afford an attorney. I had fast internet. I think it was a very fair process. Yes, there was mistakes. But a friend that applied along with me at my house supposedly got in six seconds early, but our computers said 10:00 a.m. So I don't think anyone that got in early did it out of bad faith. It was just everyone's computer has different time, and we have recorded evidence. I haven't shared this yet, but we recorded the whole process. I started after 10:00 o'clock. I still won myself, but supposedly he started six seconds early, but it was 10:00 a.m. on our computer. So it just, everyone's time server is different. So I don't think anyone did it in bad faith. Please give us our temporary approvals. Let's fix it for Round Two, and I wish everyone else luck, and that's it. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Bonita Money, Executive Director of Endica, the National Diversity and Inclusion Cannabis Alliance. I'd like to speak on Items One Through Five.
You have two minutes.
The City of Los Angeles is the largest cannabis market in the world, and we have not issued one retail license under the social equity ordinance. We have had a social equity platform for over three years, and there has been severe financial, emotional, and mental harm to folks that have lived in the hopes of opportunity to be a cannabis owner. So what initially seemed to be to give hope to a city has been severely traumatized and affected by the war on drugs and now has left folks hopeless and angry. The City of Los Angeles has a duty to create and uphold a fair, equitable, and uncorrupted application process on this next round in order to license the folks that are real social equity applicants. So we would like to have the city council do the right thing, make the right vote for our Black folks in Los Angeles and have continually, that have been continually shut out of every major industry. And at this point, they need to be fairly vetted, you know, all the other folks that got in early or whatever, like this other gentleman said. They did get in early, and that was totally unfair. So right now, Black folks will no longer be ignored, pushed aside, and have their necks continually kneel'd on. So Endica supports the DCR's recommendations, and we fully support limiting Type Ten retail and Type Nine delivery application processing to social equity applicants until January 2020. And this is the kind of bold commitment to establishing a working and meaningful cannabis social equity licensing program that has been needed. Observing and experiencing predatory practices repeatedly over the past few years, we are fully in support of the proposed amendments that seek to ensure true ownership by the social equity individual applicant. There's too many loopholes in the current ordinance that have made the council's commitment to social equity hollow and left actual social equity applicants out to dry. So we support the move to use police reporting districts instead of zip codes to determine SCA eligibility.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're going to take one more public comment, and then I think we would have satisfied our requirement, then I'm going to ask the department to come up. So this last public comment is from...
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Reshma Bishnoi, Items One Through Five.
You have two minutes.
I urge the council to direct DCR to process all Phase Three Round One applications. The social equity program has been completely corrupted by a flawed first-come, first-served process that allowed over 200 applicants to get a head start in an unfair advantage. If the goal of this social equity program is to truly promote equitable ownership opportunities to decrease the disparities in life outcomes for marginalized communities, then all Phase Three Round One applications must be processed. This is the only possible fair way to move forward. Hundreds of low-income applicants spend thousands of dollars and have now been completely abandoned by DCR and this council. In this time of a pandemic, millions of people have hit the streets to protest for racial justice, but DCR and the council is proposing to move forward with a system that disenfranchises the very people who were so disproportionately hurt by the war on drugs. The first-come, first-served process gave an unfair advantage to rich investors who were able to hire law firms to submit multiple applications, and is allowing those who knowingly cheated to win. If the council actually wants to help marginalized communities, then you must vote to process all of the Phase Three Round One applications and give all of those applicants a fair shot at participating in this industry that was built upon the bodies of Black and Brown citizens.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment. As I ask the department to come forward, Mr. Clerk, why don't we move on the consent calendar items? So on Item Five, we'll adopt the DCR report. On Items Six and Seven, we'll adopt the commission reapportment. And on Items Eight and Ten, we'll adopt the motion. So without objection, those items will be deemed approved. Mr. Harris Dawson, you okay with that?
I concur with the chair.
All right. Okay. Welcome, Ms. Packer. Why don't you walk us through what is before this body today?
Kat Packer, Executive Director of the Department of Cannabis Regulation. I'm joined by staff of the department. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to the committee members for scheduling this committee meeting. It's been a lot of time thinking about how to address the committee to bring these comprehensive set of amendments to council. And part of what I wanted to make sure that I articulated today is how urgent it is for us to be able to move through with comprehensive reform. Before I dive into the specifics of what we have before us in the reports and the proposed recommendations, I first just want to thank this council and for city leadership. The reality is that we are in a moment when we're going through a health crisis, we're going through an economic crisis, and we're going through the crisis that has always been racial inequity in our country. And the nexus between cannabis policy and racial injustice is clear to me, and I know that it's clear to this council and committee as well. And that's exactly why we created the social equity program together. It is because Black and Brown communities, African-American and Latinos communities, had been disproportionately impacted, disproportionately policed, and we made a commitment to actively acknowledge those harms and address the harms of the drug war. But the reality is that we also have to be on the lookout for new harms, and leadership on cannabis policy is needed now more than ever. Councilmember Wesson, Councilmember Harris Dawson. We're at a moment in time where cannabis is still a Schedule I narcotic. Our industry still cannot bank. People can still lose their jobs for using cannabis. People can still be denied jobs for past cannabis use. There's still such a stigma associated with cannabis, and we have to work every day to identify and eliminate disparities, and that's exactly what our package of recommendations here seek to do, and it's just the beginning. We recognize that we still have a lot more to do. I resonate with many of the stakeholders who articulated their concerns and their hopes for the city, things like moving forward with the Community Reinvestment Fund, which this committee championed. These are still priorities of this department. I know that these are still priorities of the city, and I look forward to working with council to move forward on these items because since day one, we've been under scrutiny. We have to be a model. We have the opportunity to be a model, and more importantly, we're simply responsible for these policies and their impacts. Today, before you, we have proposed a comprehensive set of revisions to the ordinance. What I'd like to be able to do is to walk through what those revisions are. As much as I can, I'll try and summarize them because they are comprehensive. And then I want to articulate exactly what we heard from stakeholders and how these proposals seek to address what we've heard from stakeholders.
Fine. Let us proceed.
Thank you so much. So as I share this presentation, I'm going to go back and forth between recommendations that are related to the licensing program and recommendations that are related to the social equity program. And the reality is that the success of our social equity program is dependent on the success of our licensing program and vice versa. Applicants can't be successful in our social equity program if they're not successful in the licensing program, and so comprehensive revisions are needed to our licensing program in order to allow our licensing and social equity program to be successful. Some of the proposes are simply a reorganization of some of the sections. Others are non-substantive. For example, we've added several definitions to reconcile the city's terms with state definitions. For example, we have deleted the term pre-licensing inspection, but clarified what an initial inspection is, what a final inspection is, what an inspection is prior to renewal. We've added a new definition for primary personnel to identify the individuals who would participate in a background check. In addition, we've added several definitions to clarify our process with the state process. One of the things that we've wanted to do and what we heard from stakeholders is the need for more streamlined application process. Many stakeholders have shared frustrations with delays associated with the application process, and so part of what we've proposed is a comprehensive revision that seeks to make our process more streamlined, and we do that by adding clarity to the application process, by breaking up the application process into specific stages. We've articulated pre-application review, which would allow the department to review a business for compliance with its location and also review for compliance with the compliance with the... a business for compliance with its location, and also review for compliance with the live scan requirements upfront, so that early on in the application process, applicants can decide whether or not a particular location or owner is viable to move forward. Part of what we've done is to create a specific process for temporary approval for all applicants, so that it's not just Phase 1 and Phase 2 businesses who get to participate in temporary approval in the city, but that this would be a process that all applicants can participate in. Furthermore, we have articulated what the annual license application process, which would include submission of annual licensing documents, a file inspection, sequel clearance, and when applicable, the scheduling of community meetings and public hearings. Again, these aren't new requirements. These are just making these requirements available and this process available to all applicants, not just our existing medical marijuana dispensaries. One of the other things that we've done in our proposed revision is to clarify how application modifications can be made, because it's critically important for businesses to be able to make modifications to their application. Some of the application modifications that we've clarified are business premises relocation, changes to the ownership structure, changes to the legal entity name, and the physical modification of the business premises. One of the things that we constantly heard from stakeholders was the need for businesses to relocate, and we agree. It is necessary for the viability of our licensing and social equity program for businesses to be able to relocate. However, we understand that council had concern about businesses relocating to different community plan areas and potentially taking away licensing opportunity from social equity and other applicants. So we've tried to propose a recommendation that seeks to balance those considerations and would allow all businesses to move, but with certain restrictions to make sure that we're addressing the concerns that council originally made.
You know what, if it's okay. Let me interrupt for two seconds and ask you to go over the relocation piece again.
Of course.
And let's just simplify it. What are we talking about here? Because I know that a lot of people have concerns, so let's just try to simply clarify it, if you would.
Of course. One moment while I pull up my notes. So our proposal seeks to provide a process for all businesses to be able to relocate. And our proposal creates a series of rules that businesses would follow that allows for flexibility, but businesses would have to be compliant with these requirements in order to move. So I'll articulate this process, and I'll use an example to help articulate how this rule would work. So I want to first talk about delivery, distribution, and non-volatile manufacturing activities. We can also throw testing into this category. In this category of licenses are those licenses that are not subject to an undue concentration finding, meaning that there isn't a limit on the number of licenses that can exist in a particular community plan area. For these specific activity and license types, we are proposing that these businesses be able to move anywhere in the city so long as the business premises complies with the zoning and sensitive use restrictions. So because there's no limit on the number of delivery businesses that can exist in a particular community plan area, that delivery business should be able to move to any community plan area because a new applicant could apply at any time. So that's the rule that we want to create for those license and activity types that are not subject to undue concentration findings. However, we need to create another rule for those activity types that are subject to undue concentration, because when those businesses move to new community plan areas, they change the total number of licenses in that community plan area. And this was one of the concerns that council was seeking to address when it originally prohibited businesses from being able to move. The original concern when council prohibited businesses from moving was that existing medical marijuana dispensaries that were moving were going to potentially take away locations, viable locations, that could have been available to social equity applicants. And so we've created a rule that seeks to balance this consideration but still allows the flexibility to move, because I can tell you, even the applicant who came before this body and asked for there to be a prohibition on relocations has since asked for a relocation, because businesses need to be able to relocate. We've learned through this, we've heard stakeholders say, either due to predatory practices because of a landlord, there could be a fire, the reality is that certain modifications are just necessary. So I want to walk through this rule that we've created for retail cultivation and volatile manufacturing. Under our proposal, if the business premises is located in a community plan area that has not reached undue concentration, the applicant or licensee may relocate within that same community plan area. Let's have it hypothetical. Let's say that in a particular community plan area, 10 retail licenses are available. Let's say that I'm the eighth applicant in this community plan area. Under this rule, if I am the eighth applicant and the community plan area does not have its 10 licenses yet, I can relocate within that same community plan area, because again, me staying in the community plan area isn't impacting anyone else who could seek to participate in opportunities outside of that community plan area. However, if the business location is in a community plan area that has reached undue concentration, the applicant or licensee may only relocate within the same community plan area provided the application was submitted when the area had not reached undue concentration. So under the same hypothetical, there's 10 retail licenses available in a community plan area. I am application number eight, because I was there before the area reached undue concentration, before it hit 10, I can still move in that particular community plan area. Next rule. If the application was submitted with a PCN finding from City Council, and part of what we wanted to think through was the reality that council will be granting some of these approvals for public convenience or necessity. And when council is granting these approvals for public convenience or necessity, it's really doing so in a site-specific manner. You're granting the business the authorization to apply for this PCN request at this location. So we didn't want to create a process that allowed someone to get a PCN request, an application, at one location, and then a couple weeks later, seek a relocation request down the street. So what we've done is created a rule that said if you come into a particular community plan area through the PCN process, until you get your license, if you want to relocate, you have to go back to the PCN process. So what we've done is to create a rule where every single business can move. If they are one of these activities that is subject to undue concentration, they may have to seek a PCN request to effectuate that move, because for example, let's say that you're in a particular community plan area and you want to move into a community plan area that has already reached undue concentration. The only way that you'd be able to move into that area that had reached undue concentration as a new applicant is through a PCN request. So we feel as though we've created a rule that allows for flexibility, but that still addresses the concern that council originally raised when prohibiting relocations the first time. So we think that we've done our best to propose an amendment that would allow folks to be able to move. All right. So I'm jumping back into my presentation about the package of amendments, proposed amendments that are before you. One of the other things that we are articulating in our proposal is the opportunity for the department to conduct its community meetings via video phone or phone conferencing. We recognize the reality with COVID-19 right now, that we may have to do community meetings virtually, and what we're trying to do is just effectuate a process where delays that we cannot anticipate, maybe due to COVID-19 or other related issues, that this would not cause additional delays in the process. And so, for example, one of the things that our proposal does is to allow us to conduct a virtual community meeting. I am now going to shift into talking about some of the specific changes that we're recommending for the social equity program. And as I had mentioned previously, the success of our licensing program is dependent on our social equity program and vice versa. The purpose of the social equity program is to promote equitable ownership and employment opportunities in the cannabis industry to decrease the disparities in life outcomes for marginalized communities. Our proposed amendments propose a comprehensive reorganization to simplify program eligibility and program requirements and benefits. First, we're seeking to allow people to participate under the social equity program, either based on the original criteria or the expanded criteria as proposed in our recommendations. The original criteria is based on an individual's status as low income, having a cannabis arrest or conviction, or living in a disproportionately impacted area. We have not changed those particular definitions for folks who have been verified previously. So there are about 1,600 applicants who were verified as social equity applicants back in December of 2019. We are not changing the eligibility for those applicants. They can still participate and qualify as they were originally verified. However, we are seeking to change the eligibility for the program for folks who have not been verified under the old criteria. The only change that we're making to the old criteria, and it's more of a naming convention that we're changing, we're not changing any of the requirements of this particular category of applicant, but we are revising the term "Tier 3 Social Equity Applicant" to a "Tier 3 Applicant." This revision is appropriate because individuals assigned to this status do not meet any of the qualifying criteria to be a social equity individual applicant. Unlike Tier 1 or Tier 2 applicants, the Tier 3 applicant is not a social equity applicant, but an applicant who agrees to support a social equity applicant via a social equity agreement with the city. Again, we're not changing any of the requirements of this particular provision, we are just changing the naming convention. We recognize that, for example, when we're participating in grant programs and articulating data about who our social equity applicants are, I don't think that it's appropriate for us to consider our Tier 3 applicants as social equity applicants, and this will allow us to effectuate that change so that these folks are more appropriately referenced in our code. The other thing that we're seeking to do is for the new eligibility criteria, we would like for folks to be able to qualify if they meet any two of the three following criteria: low income, having a prior California cannabis arrest or conviction, or having a 10-years cumulative residency in a disproportionately impacted area. What's significantly important about how we're choosing and how we're proposing that we change this eligibility criteria is that we are seeking to have the definition of disproportionately impacted area be based on police reporting districts instead of zip codes. This will allow us to more appropriately target individuals who are impacted. One of the other changes that we're recommending, specifically as it relates to the social equity program, relates to equity share. And this is something that we heard a lot from stakeholders about and that we really wanted to make sure that we took the time to get right. We now have the benefit of looking at and participating in the initial review of these operating agreements, of talking to other regulators who have similar provisions, and then also listening to a lot of feedback from stakeholders. We heard lots of stakeholders say that they were concerned about predatory practices. We share those concerns, but I truly appreciate the stakeholders who not only shared their concerns but also shared recommendations with us about how to address this issue. And we feel as though our recommendations on equity share are directly reflective of the feedback that we've received from stakeholders thus far. Very quickly, I'll go through what we've done with the equity share language, and it's specifically created to provide additional protections to mitigate against potential predatory practices. Chief among the concept of equity share is unconditional ownership. So part of what we've done is to try and ensure that under no circumstance are the social equity applicants allowed to divest or relinquish any part of their ownership, their equity share that they're required to have. Our proposed amendments expand the definition of equity share to address profits, dividends, and distributions, or other payments more appropriately. Our equity share definition is expanded to address voting rights on fundamental decisions. Our amendments even provide protections for the social equity individual applicant in the event of his or her death. One of the items that we wanted to do also, and this is not just an expansion of the definition of equity share, but the creation of new tools for social equity applicants to protect themselves against potential predatory practices, is that we're giving applicants the power to audit their records, to assess compliance, and to initiate legal action due to a breach of contract agreement. And essentially, part of what we're articulating here is an effort to ensure that the social equity applicant truly has the equity share. Again, we've made substantive revisions to this particular section to try and address all of the feedback that we've heard from stakeholders. The last item that I want to mention as it relates to the social equity program is what was a very deliberate decision by this department to propose limiting delivery and retail opportunity to social equity applicants until January 1st of 2025. Now, I agree with stakeholders who have called thus far and said that the city is in desperate need of additional licenses. I agree. But I think that this is our moment to ensure that those additional opportunities are made available equitably to our social equity applicants. It wasn't an afterthought. It was an intentional and deliberate proposal to promote social equity applicants and to ensure that they have the opportunity to take advantage of first mover advantages that our existing medical marijuana dispensaries have had the opportunity to take advantage of. I'm not saying, and I'm not proposing, that folks not have the opportunity to participate in delivery or retail. We are simply articulating a period of time that we want to intentionally promote and support our social equity applicants. Again, these are the specific items that we've brought today, included in what is part of a comprehensive revision. Councilmember Wesson and Councilmember Harris-Dawson, I won't attempt to articulate to you that this is going to be the last time that we're before this body, and to be honest, I'd love to be before this body more regularly. Cannabis policy is something that is nascent, it is growing every single day, and we need leadership every single day on these items. And we wouldn't have made the progress that we've made thus far without your leadership. This city would not be where it is right now without the leadership of you, Councilmember Wesson, and you, Councilmember Harris-Dawson, in championing cannabis and being able to articulate what strong and responsible cannabis policy reform looks like, to be bold and courageous. We have to be able to articulate in this moment unequivocally that Black Lives Matter, that this policy matters, that it impacts our community. I think that this is the right time to move this conversation forward, and I stand with community members who are articulating that this is our responsibility. It is our responsibility, I take it to heart, and I appreciate the trust that you and this council have put in me and my leadership in moving this conversation forward. Thank you.
You know, let me just jump in quickly and say, I appreciate credit that you've directed towards Mr. Harris-Dawson and myself, but we're all in this together. This is a bold, new industry, very challenging, and we've done the best we could together to try to open this up and to be fair. And I do agree with you, it is the moment, not just for this, but for a lot of changes to create fairness in this country, and I believe we have a responsibility to try to do that. And I know we're never going to please everybody, but as long as we attempt to be as fair as we can, I think that's all anybody can ask of us. So before we chat a moment about some of the amendments, I wanted to see if Mr. Harris-Dawson wanted to chime in for a moment.
No, I'm just grateful to the Chair and our Director of the Department of Cannabis Regulation. I think, you know, this is a heavy, heavy lift, and from the beginning, really at the leadership of the Chair, we really wanted to confront systemic racism that's been around for 400 years, and you can't do that with one program, you certainly can't do that with one program when you only have a couple, three years to get going. But I think, you know, what we've accomplished, we can be proud of, and I think we've set the standard. And I think we've set the standard for the nation. And again, we can do more, and I trust that our director will come to us with more and better. But I think it's, you know, particularly notable that from the outset, the chair for this morning's committee meeting has talked about this in terms of reparations. And again, you can only do so much with one business and one industry and one product, but I think we've done a lot here, and that's because you've been committed to it from the beginning, Director Packer. And so I just want to thank and congratulate you for that as we continue the discussion and continue to have you back in front of policymakers to continue to refine and improve the policy as we go.
Thank you, Mr. Harris-Dawson. Now, you know, Ms. Packard, even though, you know, I want to just say "cat."
And you're more than welcome to, sir.
If you would just kind of give an overview of the amendments that we've done today where it relates to rollout, delivery, and some of the other changes, if you could just kind of explain that. They were read into the record by the clerk, but maybe if you could just talk about some of the changes that are being incorporated.
So I have, okay. I believe that I have all of them in front of me, so if I miss one, please let me know. There's a specific amendment to amend language not to delete the last sentence in 104.0147. This is a specific definition as it relates to undue concentration. It specifically relates to the micro-business license types. So this language is just added back. It was unintentionally struck through in our report, and so this particular amendment would add that language back in Section 104.0147, specifically in relation to the undue concentration definition. Another one of these amendments that we have is to add language to state that upon payment of the required fee, this is a specific fee for the PCN application, the department would have 30 days to transmit a PCN request to the city clerk. So this particular amendment would set a period of time in which the department would have to transmit to city clerk the application form and request from a PCN applicant to the city clerk. Another amendment that is being made is that specifically for Type 10 Retail Round 2, for the lottery as it's proposed. There is an amendment that would require people who are seeking to participate in this lottery to have a California cannabis arrest or conviction. This is different criteria than is proposed for the expanded social equity analysis. So folks would have to meet certain criteria to participate in all future application processing. But what this particular amendment is doing is creating specific eligibility criteria for the lottery. And this essentially would elevate the California cannabis arrest or conviction in the eligibility criteria itself, articulating that in order to participate in the lottery, folks would have to have both a California cannabis arrest or conviction and one of the two criteria, either low income or disproportionately impacted area, as amended. The, and I'm sorry, I should have combined these PCN-related amendments together. I had just previously mentioned a PCN amendment that would require the department to transmit the request to city clerk within 30 days. One of the other amendments that's being made to the PCN process is a change to the application procedures in relation to the PCN process. And this would require PCN applicants to engage with and seek written input from the following key stakeholders for the area in which the proposed business premises will be located, including but not limited to the area neighborhood council, the LAPD Division, the local chamber of commerce, and at least one substance abuse intervention prevention and treatment organization within the community plan area. The amendment also articulates that LAPD shall provide the city council crime data for the area and later stating their position on the application request. The last amendment that I have before you this morning is an amendment that would move to amend Section 104.06.1C. This is specifically the round one process. And what this amendment would do would allow the department to process the next 100 applications from the list published by DCR dated September 26, 2019. It would create a process subject to re-review of any applications that were deemed ineligible for further processing due to a community plan area having reached undue concentration on or after September 3, 2019, or due to a sensitive use created by a Phase 3 retail round one application. This amendment further articulates that applications who are eligible for further processing, those applications who the department has already identified as being eligible for further processing shall not be included in the calculation of undue concentration as defined. Just to rearticulate this point, this would allow for an additional 100 retail licenses in this round. What I appreciate about this amendment is that it maintains approximately 150 retail licenses that would be available through the future lottery. As we've heard, many applicants and stakeholders are asking that this body to not utilize a first-come-first-served process. Again, this particular process allows for 100 additional retail opportunities and still allows for approximately 150 retail licenses to be available via lottery. So I appreciate this amendment. I think that there are some stakeholders who will be pleased with this amendment. As you have mentioned, we may not be able to satisfy all stakeholders, but as I had articulated previously, I think that the opportunity for increased retail opportunity is worth deliberate consideration by this council, and so I appreciate this body putting forth an amendment that would allow for additional retail opportunities.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Harris-Dawson, any questions?
No questions, no comments.
Okay, then, again, I want to thank you, Ms. Packard, and your team, city attorney, everybody. Okay, let's, without objection then, let's adopt Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 9, and 11 as amended. Request that the city attorney transmit the draft ordinances no later than Friday, June 26. Without objection, so ordered. Okay, so then, so let it be written, so let it be done. Is there any additional business before this body?
No, mister.
Okay, then this committee is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Thank you so much.